I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda presented.
I think I've seen that real quick there, Tim.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? No. The consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. May I make a question?
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? No. Public comments? Glenn Corr and Kim will come forward and introduce your new employees. Appreciate it. Glenn, go first.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Recently we've had the lucky hiring another good employee, Garrett Johnson. Just been on this about a month. Glad to have him. And he said we did a night round with all of them. Talking real good through the group.
Welcome.
Glad to have you.
Anything you want to say?
Glad to be here.
(laughing) That's good. Thank you. Kim?
Could I mention one other thing while I'm here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, later on tonight in your business, um, new business, we're going to be asking select folks to use F-150.
Mayor, Board, I appreciate it. Um, I wanted to just, real quickly, go through a brief slideshow showing some of the work that we've been doing here recently in the past thirty days or so. A few months back, you approved for the purchase of a mini excavator. We made that purchase, included in that purchase package was a brush cover unit. And my intent with that was to utilize it to open up our utility right away, uh, sewer for electric right away. So, we've gotten that thing in action and, uh, been sort of utilizing it, I suppose, about the past thirty days. We've been doing, uh, Glenn took some really nice pictures as we've been using some machines. So, we'd like to just show you a little bit of what we've been able to accomplish with these machines. And this photo is on, uh, still an outfall line. It's beneficial with us, it's the most of the problems, uh, sewer, water, right away, this electric right away. Gives us the ability to work through problem areas through distant terrain and things like that, get them open up and get them where we can assess them without further equipment being a little repair needed. It helps us still get in and quickly make that repair and get services through the question. You guys are very, uh, you do it.
(laughing)
Well, here's some, here's some repair lines.
Yeah, as far as the area lines go, um, this is out on I-95 corridor at Hannah Creek. We've never, ever been able to get in there. And, um, since we brought this machine in, uh, we've been able to clear it out pretty well and which, from my standpoint, makes it easier in the middle of the night when you go out and eye stand. You can actually see, you don't have to walk through brushes every head high. So, it just makes it more manageable and plus getting wired back up is a down.
Some of the locations, as you see on the slide, that we've used machines so far with, uh, some of the utility, lots of ways along and crossing I-95, along these two streets out, uh, at Hill Street, connecting back into Dog Island, in the Dog Island and then way to, um, along Honey Cup Street, uh, to cross into Gulf Martin Street as well as some of the, uh, some of the vegetation was, uh, on the pit slot that encroaches onto the, onto the roadway along Martin Street. This is, uh, this is the before and after, actually. So, if you see, so those here, uh, this is the quarter machine and then this will be after we've completed the work. So, you can see it, uh, it gives us the ability to get access in there. This machine is a single operator, uh, he sits on cab, he's protected from the brush and, uh, earlier when we started, a little early in the season when it was warmer, uh, he actually got into a giant loss nest and he put out. I didn't even worry about it, I just kept cutting, um, but, you know, it's a safe machine for us to use and makes us put it together and being able to get this part of the work done. The purchase of this machine and use of it really helps us offset some of our outsourced and dollars to go in the past. And I think we probably tried to get a money's worth out of the outsourced and so we got to a point where we've been able to get it all to access and then utilizing outsourced and get through it. For this machine to offset, uh, those expenses here. And it was just a brief opportunity for Glenn and I to both say, uh, thanks to Matt, thanks to all of you who worked for it and trusting in our request and purchasing some of our installation, which is good to regard for investment and the opportunity to, uh...
Well, we appreciate what you guys have done to get those funds. And I know we were, like you said, we have ice storms, uh, you can't get the work properly with the job. So, we appreciate, uh, that it was a valuable team to, to, to lead that money.
Mayor, I think that's one thing that Admiral did that we wanted to applaud both in the last year. And y'all probably know that we're not operating as non-essential. So, we're using senior experienced equipment operators and Mr. Charles Hardy, who's a part-time employee for us, which is good to keep Charles active and working, but you can see the quality of work and that keeps our other FTE employees working on their primary important business. And I thank those guys for keeping that relationship with Mr. Hardy open. You can see the amount of work he got done and he can do that without hurting or damaging equipment and it's really, really good to have somebody like that operating.
That's great. We appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Is anybody wishing to come and address the board? I ask you to come forward now. Anybody want to come and address the board? Okay. There's no old business, so we go right into the new business. We're going to recognize, as all of you know, tonight was the kickoff for the Transportation, uh, comprehensive transportation plan that, uh, the town is beginning to, to work towards. And we have with us tonight that's going to speak to us is Jay McKennis, uh, with Raimy Kemp and Associates, who will make a presentation on transportation.
Appreciate y'all having me here this evening. Um, we had a, had a pretty good crowd at the, at the public meeting earlier today. As the mayor mentioned, I'm here with, from Raimy Kemp and Associates and we're working on a comprehensive transportation plan for Benson. Um, and I just wanted to talk with you a few minutes and, and talk, talk about what a, uh, comprehensive transportation plan is and a little bit about how this, this study will, will go for the board. So, uh, comprehensive transportation plan is a, it's a multimodal look at, um, uh, developing a transportation plan for community. We're intending to look at what the needs are for all modes of transportation for the next twenty or thirty years. Public involvement is, is a big part of the, of the process, you know, developing one of these things. And tonight, tonight's meeting, we've started that. We're looking to have, uh, find community consensus on what the needs are that need to address, um, in the transportation system for Benson community. So, well, so in order to determine what trans, future transportation needs are, the, uh, the town has hired my firm, Raimy Kemp and Associates, um, to develop this plan. And in the, uh, request for qualifications that the town issued, y'all have the following goals for the plan. To identify goals and strategies to address immediate and future transportation needs for other community. Determine appropriate designs for all travel modes. Determine appropriate system connectivity within the plan study. Define roadway alignments with sufficient detail for right-of-way protection. Identify future alternate truck routes to divert truck traffic from the downtown center. Determine appropriate designs for the future widening into 242 north of Benson. And evaluate and determine bicycle pedestrian alternatives in accordance with adopted town plan and policy. So, those are, those are the goals for the plan, uh, that, that we're studying right now. And this, this outline here is showing, uh, an outline of, of the process for, for the study. First step in it is to develop the vision for the plan. And that's where we are right now. In tonight's meeting, we've, we've started that. We're going to be, be working on that in, into January or early next year. And then after we develop that vision, we'll do a, conduct a needs assessment. Expect that to, to take to around April. We'll analyze alternatives based on those needs that, that we, uh, identify. And then we develop the final plan and present that to the, the board, uh, in, in around June and for, for y'all's adoption. Again, we're developing the vision, as part of developing the CTP vision, we'll be identifying issues to be addressed, we'll be developing goals and objectives. And, and part of that is to set up a CTP steering committee. And that, that committee will help guide the process and be looking at, uh, what, what are the issues to be addressed and, um, help us determine what the goals and objectives of, of the study should be and verify those. When we start conducting the needs assessment, we'll be looking at the name use, transportation environment, community data for both now and, and looking into the future. So, again, this, this plan is for twenty or thirty years from now, uh, looking at what we anticipate the needs to be. We'll also be identifying current and future deficiencies in the transportation network for, for all the different modes, for, for roads, uh, bicycles and pedestrians. As part of analyzing the alternatives, we'll be looking at developing and evaluating alternatives for the different, uh, needs that we've identified. We'll be obtaining public comment on the CTP alternative. We'll be looking to, we'll be presenting alternatives to y'all as well as the public as a whole. We'll develop a draft CTP and present it to the public for comment. When we start developing the final plan, we'll, we'll revise that draft plan based on comments from the public and, and from, from the town. And we'll present that comment to the public and to the local district. And then we'll, uh, we'll look to the town if y'all, if y'all like what we've developed and if y'all are going to adopt it. And, uh, we, we met with D O T this afternoon and talked with, uh, the, the steps after the town's adoption of it. And what we'll do is, is present the plan to the county, um, for their, their adoption as part of the, the county's overall CTP. And then following that, projects that have been identified in, in Benson's plan could potentially, uh, would be able to be funded and could go through the strategic, uh, prioritization process that D O T has. This, this is a map showing the study area. And this is in the handout that was passed out tonight. And so, if anybody has, if y'all had any comments on that study area, um, we'd certainly be interested in hearing that. Uh, and also, within the handout, there was a survey that was made, made available. That's also going to be on the town's website and, uh, I believe it will be available if , uh, somebody can fill it out online and commit it online. There's also an address where they can mail it to you. People can also bring it to town hall. And, uh, here at town hall will be copies of, of the handout and the survey that people can come by and pick up in a week or a while. So, our, uh, again, our next step would, in, in the process, will be developing steering committees for the plan. And that, that, that's what I, I'll have to y'all to see.
What do you, what do you see as far as meetings belong to where, uh, bringing us up to date or where it is standing, February, March or whatever? Are you looking out for meetings in that respect?
Yeah, yes, sir. I, I, I think we're probably looking at it around February. We'll probably, uh, have, have something to report to around that time. And then, uh, we, we could meet with you again probably in March or, or April. You know, really, any, anytime y'all have any questions, um, or would like to hear how things are going, we'd be going happy to, to come meet with you.
How many people will you have working on it?
There, with our firm, there's, there's going to be, be about three or four people that are, that are working on it. Different, it, it's going to depend on where, where it is in the pipeline.
I would say it's probably important to get as many people as you can to fill out the paperwork.
Yes.
To see what people are thinking.
Mayor, as the bail off of what Jay has indicated, we as a team met today and our approach would be to create, uh, that survey in Spanish so we have a dialogue. Our intent is to make a fillable form that'll be online. We shot a video tonight of Jay presenting a media team and then upload that to our social media account with a link or a hyperlink for the folks to get access to that, uh, that survey. We also can do more through the promotion of our newsletter in the month of January. And we believe with the drop dead deadline to secure that data will be February 1st, which is a timeline that works well with that. So, we're going to work hard as an internal staff to get those surveys out to the housing authorities, the Benson area, the paralegal association, do a series of other groups, the chamber of commerce, and then we disseminate it out. Today, we did have representation from the county looking at the meeting and they indicated on January twenty second, there's an opportunity, I think at South Johnson High School to get in front of a lot of families and parents. And so, we'll intend to try to get a lead there to set up as well. Over the next six weeks, we'll be on a massive information gathering campaign. So, if you can encourage friends, neighbors and business owners to fill the survey out, we greatly appreciate it. If we need to, we can electronically submit it to them. We can do it again online or in hard copy. Our media team is going to place it not just at town hall, but we'll look to put it at the museum, the library, parks and recreation, points where folks are coming into the, in the public settings, we'll look at all areas. The question that we have administratively for you as a board is I would highly encourage at least two members of this board to be on that steering committee. And then we'd look to you all to determine who and how else you would like to frame steering committee and get those folks appointed or, uh, volunteering to be a part of that. Because I believe that immediately after the first of the year, you're going to want that steering committee in position. So, uh, we're thinking some business owners, folks that are maybe in transportation or logistics. The suggestions would be the person who's in charge of shipping and receiving at Berry Plastics or Berry Global, things like that. We've reached out to them. But if the boards want to take a couple of minutes and have conversations about being on that steering committee, uh, it would be beneficial. We'll do all your groundwork. We just need to know how and large and who and how you want to assemble that steering committee so we can be better.
Do we have quite a number of volunteers? I think that's too great. How long? How many, how many focus people? Do we have a focus group?
How, how long does that mean? How, how many, how many focus people? For the steering committee, what would be your target number?
I'm, I'm thinking around, around ten, ten to fifteen people. Total for, for the season.
Do I have a suggestion? Because our, our meeting in January is on the ninth. Would it be appropriate for staff to work with commissioners to try to assemble and secure those volunteers and when we come back and you all approve that steering committee, we can give the official list of Jay on the tenth and Jay after you to that, sound like a reasonable timeline? We'll work if we decide to figure out the disciplines and things that are working on.
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if it's okay, we thought that, uh, we have done this in the past, that it might be appropriate to incentivize participation where we could do a giveaway if her name is involved. Uh, and we've done that before with utility, signups and other things where if, if it's not a problem, if it's not an ethical issue, just to make a small giveaway and try to just make more of it on the social media. Just like we did with the Yeti tours and the Yeti giveaways for the shopping.
You guys can put that together.
So, if you see something come out, we're intending to do it to just get greater potential pressure.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay?
I'm with you, Jay, so I'm thankful to you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank y'all. Y'all have been lead.
Look forward to working with you.
Look forward to working with y'all.
Matt, you want to talk about the leaving company?
Yes, sir. I want to go ahead and recognize Brian Johnson's here. Brian could come up and speak with us. We were working as swiftly as we could, uh, from our request for qualifications, Mr. Robbins and I were able to, uh, work through that process when we had originally come this out back in September. If you recall, we had put that project on hold because D O T had talked about coming in pavement September, October. Now, we believe that that's going to hold off until the two thousand nineteen summer. So, uh, at last meeting, we asked, it wasn't something to come forward. And so, uh, I think we want to use the term hot off the presses. Brian is working hard on that contract and brought it in for you today. So, you have hard copies in front of you. I'll let Brian speak to it more. The request is, uh, to engage in an engineering contract at a cost of approximately seventy five thousand four hundred dollars. And then I'll put it back to the Brian and explain what we've received for that and what the process and timeline for those prepared.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, glad to be with you tonight. Appreciate, uh, y'all's confidence in us and looking forward to working with you on the project. Um, I'll, I'll start off by just telling you a little bit about sort of what we're seeing as the project. There are a few things still that'll be refined as we get into it a little bit more. Uh, and then I'll get into a little bit of what, what our scope would be of services and then some of the schedule and management issues. As far as the project goes, there's two components, the majority of which is sanitary sewers. And I was here last month talking to you about the overall town's wide system. And of course, Main Street is no exception, there's issues there. We found some issues during our other study investigation. So, as far as sewer on Main Street, of course, the, the whole goal with this project would be to get the infrastructure to the best place we can to avoid future, uh, you know, just interruptions within the pavement. And we'll have a brand new pavement come next September. And, uh, we want to make sure that you don't have a fresh open cut in that pavement come October of next year. So, no guarantees, but we're certainly trying to, uh, get ahead of that as much as we can. So, sanitary sewer, what we found, uh, there's two blocks. And I'll just really quickly go over this. There's two blocks between Elm all the way up to the railroad that, uh, we found problems. And we're going to have to do some kind of improvement there. We think probably full replacement of some sort. And then, so that's, that's probably the biggest cost item that we have. But then we're going to need to do some more inspection on some sewer lines, some of the laterals that come off of Main Street so that we can kind of get in there and see are there problems there as well. What we want to try to do is get an improvement beyond the Main Street paving limit at least so that, again, there won't be any issues hopefully going forward over the next, you know, fifteen years or so in that area. And then, and then we also found about ten to twelve manholes down Main Street from, uh, the railroad all the way to Fayette, Fayette Street. And those manholes, we feel like need to be replaced. They're old brick manholes. They're already showing signs of infuration. And they're, they're going to need repair. And I know that one just was repaired by staff, uh, a couple of months ago at Elm Street. And you'll see the, the repairs that were made there at that intersection. So, uh, we feel like this would be a good time to go ahead and get there and get those, uh, repairs made. So, total project we're looking at on the sewer side is about seven hundred fifty feet of repair, replacement, possibly up to another fifteen hundred feet or so of additional on top of that depending on the laterals that come off of the street and then about ten to twelve manholes. On the water side, there's not near as much on the water side. We, we've got a project that was planned a few years back from Elm to Fayetteville that moves the water out into the sidewalk. So, uh, there's really nothing to do right now until you guys are ready to move forward that it's ready there and it's already designed. But that would not be included in this project. The only thing in this project would be, we're going to be looking at abandoning the line in the central business district from about Elm all the way to Wall Street. Okay, um, that's an old six inch line that originally was about this big and I would estimate it probably about that big now in town. Uh, it doesn't do any good for you. I think there's maybe four or five services to them that come off of that line. The majority of the lines are, are buildings rather or service from behind. So, what we would look to do there is abandon those lines. When doing that though, there may be some, there's two things those lines are supposed to be. One, provide service to the customer, but the other is provide fire control. And so, what we need to do is make sure by abandoning that line, we're not causing any fire control issues, uh, to be able to quit out a fire, you know, in the building. So, we'll, we'll look at that and, and model that a little bit and, uh, make sure that, but I'm hoping that we don't have to do any additional infrastructure to, uh, to support that. So, really, we're talking about abandoning that. And then as far as the, um, water service, they're putting lines behind the building. The already line there, but unfortunately, right now, they're in pretty, pretty bad shape. They've been repaired quite a few times. So, they'll probably come in there and replace those lines. And that way, you'll have service, good quality service from the back. You won't have to be in Main Street, hopefully ever again with water. Okay? So, that'd be the overall objective in that central business district. The only other thing I'd say on the water side is there's several intersections along the way back towards I-95 that we want to get in there and just bring the water across Main Street, replace it in Main Street, uh, just at the intersections. And again, that way, you know, future you don't, you don't have to get back there. So, that's, that's generally the scope of the project, uh, project scope. I was asked earlier about the approximate cost. It's a high level, very high level cost right now, but I would say you ballpark somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar range to do that work. The funding, uh, that's the construction side. The funding of that, um, majority of which comes out of the sewer grant that y'all received from Hurricane Matthew a couple of years ago. So, the majority, all the sewer... So majority, all the sewer. To advertise that job to, uh, to bring as much, uh, to see what the interest was. And then we would move into construction. And the construction phase that we would do is we would help administer the contracts with, for the town, make sure that the contractor is following the contract documents potentially. Make sure that he's constructing and putting upon it. Uh, and we would do that in two, two forms. One, we would have a construction administrator and we would also have about three days a week, an observer out in the project. So he's watching to make sure that we, uh, the works are in the process. Um, and that's, that's very important on a job like this because it's all below ground. You can't see what's been done. So, uh, important to do that, do that right. So that's generally the scope of our services. Uh, the only other thing I would add is we have some additional services in there for, uh, going back in there and inspecting the sewer line internally for about eight thousand dollars in reality for that purpose. And that's the, uh, the deal.
With construction observation and a sewer inspection, we've got hourly rates on, what's the chance of you having to do that part of the round?
We could do it that way if you want. We, uh, we typically do it this way, just because we don't know if the contractor finishes it early or something like that, then you're only paying for what was done. But it, you know, we can certainly work it on some of that, that's the premise.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just asking, was, if this being figured on an hourly basis, is there a chance of that surrendering?
So, yes, so it's based on seventy-five construction days. And if, if the contractor were to go to a hundred and twenty, so over that time period, then, so that's, that's the way it's set up. We can't control that. Y'all can't control that and be up to the contractor. But, uh, assuming the contractor is on schedule, which we hope he will be, then that would not be a problem.
Anybody have any questions?
The thing with this construction time out, is it's all in the street area?
This should all be in the street area. The only thing I would say is possibly the service teams or something, um, the local service. But, um, this should, this should be all in the street. Um, I'm thinking here in Fryer, I'm, I'm pretty sure. Um, the only thing would be the service line from that corridor along, uh, Main Street from Elm to railroad. Where you're actually replacing the sewer line. We have to inspect the sewer services as well. That may be inside of it, but we can, uh, we'll have to look and see when it kind of. There would not be a total disruption of the sidewalk. It would just be a, 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 a.
How old are the, what line's in the main street?
I would say that they're back in the forties, um, if I had to guess.
What's up from the field, y'all, now?
That's fine. Yeah. They don't make that kind of pipe anymore because they're looking there right now.
The one that's right there across the grove is, is it down the main street? Cause I know you had a leak there, there. Has it been repaired? Uh, has it been repaired?
Definitely sort of used to that.
How many feet would you possibly, you definitely make that in the main street?
From, from, if you go from, uh, railroad or go from Wall Street all the way to Fayetteville, um, that's the only, we replaced everything on the west side, um, a year, a year ago. On each side, that's probably two thousand feet or so, I'll guess, between railroad back to Fayetteville. About two thousand feet. But what we're talking about here is not, you know, like the abandonment, for example, that would only be about, uh, well, actually, I think it's probably a little longer than that. The abandonment would be twelve hundred feet, like three blocks or seven blocks. So it's probably, you know, more by hundred feet there.
By abandoning that line, I mean, we don't have to, um, I think eighty, two hundred dollars a year. Are we even trying to work on for that year?
Yes.
Everybody check their schedule and in January, you know, eleven to November, if that's a good time, well, we'll be in the fourth of July. So everybody check their schedule and send me out an email if you, if that's okay. All entertain a motion to approve the schedule for next year.
Make the oath.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you. Uh, do you wanna handle this advisory or, uh... We've got, uh, a number of people that, uh, have been appointed to the various committees and, uh, do you wanna do them individually or you wanna let's go with the group? Does everybody agree, have they looked at them and they're satisfied with what's there? All entertain a motion to approve as presented from the total group.
I make the oath.
Any other discussion, any questions? There's one thing that's in addition to this, that Matt, uh, Matt, tell us what the thing is we need to, to try to settle or, you know, just to bring.
So, we haven't had a board of zoning adjustments meetings since two thousand eight, if I'm not mistaken. There's currently three vacancies on the E T J and we've sent that email out to y'all with the current members and then the, uh, the vacancies that exist. We are in desperate need of three E T J members to fill that B Z A team because we have a concern that has come forward from a property owner on N C two forty-two that needs to be heard by that group and we can't hold a meeting so we can get enough people, uh, convene that board. So if you can, please, help us locate three members that reside in the E T J that'd be willing to serve on it and to tell them it has been called upon very often to fill the vacancies since the last meeting was nearly a month ago.
So, if you have any ideas of who would be good for that and, uh, you bring that, or try to get them to fill out an application when you're forward and, you know, the top side, uh, the appointment time that we need to do this so we can settle that disagreement, I think, too. So, please do that. Uh, we have a s- a, a motion to approve the advisory board appointments. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. The next thing is, uh, the contract for the resource officers, officer for Benson Elementary and the Benson Middle School, like?
Mayor? Uh, Ken, first, just wanted to ask you a question about duties of a student resource officer. Uh, I've worked with the school board attorney office to get these documents, uh, satisfactory from my position. Um, all handles completed your last meeting and the government has moved that. All the municipality has completed its work, uh, and their station is under their body. So, um, do you have any specific questions about the contract or the contract, or should we just go along with the contract?
There's one question I had left that, uh, we've talked about, uh, but Michael Wooton was elected chairman again today, so that's not a problem. And he's the guy that, uh, that, uh, will be in charge of the discussion between, uh, the Board of Education and our chief of police, according to way this contract is.
I'll also say that if you go off the last meeting and you're talking about the contract, but at the time, maybe the issue of, uh, the funding for the company and what we will pass into the year, it hasn't guaranteed, so definitely a negative, so I think we're open to the place to, uh, after the contract, uh, I mean, for this, that could fall years and, uh, I don't know, I don't know, uh, potentially, uh, uh, potentially.
Would you resolve the period of time where it was, uh, eighteen nineteen year or, uh, a year from January, for eighteen years from January? I thought that was a good one, I think, so.
I don't know, but the school board, uh, that might, it's potentially a year, but, uh, uh, potentially.
Well, I think that's a, that's a good idea because the, the Board of Education is elected on a annual basis every two years. The chairman is part of it, so that ought to make it work. But we need to take the eighteen nineteen out of, uh, where it says this contract is for, uh, the school year, eighteen nineteen. Which, uh, I think it's on page two. It says, "The town shall provide one officer to serve as a school resource officer for the remainder of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year." Page two for further.
That'd be for the remainder of the school year.
Then it would be January, then it would be true for the year. Make sure you put that on the record.
I, I didn't want to, uh, see you two, uh, clear that stuff in the past, but, uh, seven, uh, and, uh, just wondering, I'll get off the end of my notes about, you know, the, the one, uh, uh, um, particularly after, uh, the, 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 uh, so, you know, am I guessing you want the officer to be doing the, the, uh, 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 the, the, the contract that it's been provided, uh, for the remainder of the school year, that the school year, that the contract, uh, that, uh?
I mean, that's, you see, really ought to be taken out. There's a full twenty nineteen.
Yeah. So, when they come back up and the board gives the officer, so, I mean, the, uh, I think the clarity is, uh, two thousand nineteen, ten, uh, so, January, one, and then, uh?
Yeah. Well, I would, I wanna tell the board, uh, there's, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, going around today, uh, mayors have been talking. Uh, there's a lot of the towns are upset that, uh, the schools are in corporate limits of town. Is eventually gonna have to shoulder the costs of it. That's why there's only a one-year contract and, uh, we're getting, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars and our cost is about, uh, sixty-seven thousand dollars. In the, in the case of schools that are outside the corporate limits, they're, uh, they're being handled by the sheriff's department and the county is providing the cost. And, uh, there's a lot of feeling that, that the counties can pick up the extra costs that, uh, is being expended for, for these officers. Yeah. And, uh, but I, I think, and this is just my opinion, I think we should, uh, approve this one year because we're gonna get another one to, to handle it for the first go-round because we'll have a period of three months in there to, uh, end. That's a real break about even. But how, what happens the second year, I think, uh, we gotta have a chance to, to look at that before we say yes. Now, what's your feel, what's your feelings with both?
How is that three months in a day, is that completion, is there any kind of stay up during the summer and do any compensation or anything?
No, there isn't, be a half, uh, uh, we'll be going out there.
Yeah, but, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna figure, say, in this one, you said, uh, uh, you want an officer out there, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, so, I mean, when the people that got elected, uh, they feel, uh, you could force them to handle it, uh?
Well, I mean, this is a call. I mean, if, if, uh, whoever the police department decides, Matt decides is gonna do that job, uh, they would be, be expected to be at school in January when they start back at the middle school.
Now, I'm not gonna, I'm not talking about, uh?
Oh, you're not talking about this year? Oh, I agree. That's a concern to me.
You just how you, you that and say, well? And that? Police department, uh? If forty-eight thousand is the reimbursement that we need, so we had to provide the street school and they were reimbursed, so this is a, uh, uh, uh?
I believe you would spend forty-eight thousand dollars on one piece of, uh, you won't be, uh?
I just, uh, did, did, did forty-eight thousand dollars for a year's salary following around with our police department, uh?
That's not solely salary, that's considered as salary, then it's, it's, uh, equipment, multi-passes, uh, string.
So, is that, that officer's own path, you're giving the street school, you know, that you're giving, work that out, uh, to you?
So, I mean, I would like the street school to speak to that and then what I understand is today you have the nine months, a hundred eighty calendar days included. But that officer's dedication to the street school to be dominant during that one eight, then if he or she takes vacations, I assume they're gonna take that in the off period. And then also that's gonna leave you the, the balance of the three months of that officer that control local streets. So, you're gonna get some benefits, you're basically offsetting forty-eight and that's fifty-seven, seventy thousand dollar total load of cost. And that's where I think we're seeing the county say, there's a, there's a benefit to the town to get that funding. Uh, but again, you're absolutely spot on, like, it's good to see. So, if I've misspoken, uh, please backfill me or if there's something on the floor.
We will get, uh, in, first of January, we'll get a check from the county for forty-eight thousand dollars. And if we, and if we decide, yeah, that's what the contract says. And if we decide after three or four months, we don't wanna do this anymore, we get, we give them six days notice, we have to give them back the amount of money that's put right. Isn't that what the contract says?
They give you, uh, 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 you may not get a check for forty-eight, but you got the money.
Don't say that.
And then we, if that officer out there during the school year and he goes vacation.
The way you just mentioned first, because that was something to think of a month ago, and the reimbursable grant is not a four-page, you're not gonna receive forty-eight January. I wanna be sure that everyone on the board is clear on this. Like?
The number six.
Where, where is it in the contract?
We're gonna have an officer that's training really under that. If, in the worst case scenario, it takes like the more and more of the. You're looking at people that are very fond of, in addition to the medical. I'm looking at things that have been adopted today. If we have to make a difficult decision later to find somebody that will put, to me, that this is not something that's. That's our case, right, so it's going to be. And Brown County, or Witten County, but. And those two best, and particularly, I believe we are here to play much as, as good. And I bet we're not, you know, not.
So, and, and I'm gonna pull back on memory now because I don't know if it was our last retreat or when you did the police department presentation about the growth of the department and adding the position, and I believe we were gonna try to ask for position in July. Is this position of adding, uh, taking on that ninety thousand dollars expenditure going to cover that position which we're gonna have for in July, or you're gonna have for in December?
Um, I think at some point, with the growth of the time, you're gonna come back and discuss, you know, the first step. But at this point in time, for me, there's a lot of the, um, big surprise. As a position for the police department, and then.
I don't know how to read the board, but I've had a gift that's been moved through out there. I think it'd be a great idea to talk about one. I hope my friend did. I'd love that cop to be accountable with us. I mean, I mean realistically, we could hold the cop accountable with us, but the dinosaur is broken.
And that's precisely what I was saying. And we've, we've seen times in, in, you know, in past where other individuals, depending on their depth and my district capacity, and you're not, uh, you don't have that accountability.
Well, let, let me tell you, uh, we're, we're not here trying to decide whether we oughta have a, a SRO out there or not. That's, that's not, that's not even the discussion. The discussion is, how should that be funded? And are we gonna get the funding or having to do the funding? Uh, is that fair for us to have to fund it when the, the, a lot of the other schools are gonna be funded by the county? Why not let the county fund the whole thing?
The difference, uh, the grant budget for me, man, is that we've got a hundred and dollars on, on, officially, when I said I'm, 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 can you cut this? I, I really think to, to, but to me, it's, um, you know, you know, it's.
Well, if they lift the PRF next year, and you're up and you've got the job that ties big down and then suddenly with them, you all, you all, completely, whatever.
But I'm, I'm, we need, has, I'm just, I'm just, uh, we need to make the incentive, like, of, you know, and give them a choice. The option is how you, whether you're there, or whether you're not, or if you're.
So, you're like, you're not gonna ask for that.
It's the left.
(laughing). Record that, I mean.
Uh, uh, I, it's more understanding, and, and I'm just, so if we do not throw this position, then the SRO program by the sheriff's office will not currently change, or we still have one SRO officer for three years, or do we not know that?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to, to ask any of us to answer that. I'm gonna speak on your behalf because they may say one thing and do another. We don't know.
But, 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 who is, who are we, I mean, who are we dealing with on the sound of that? Who is the person you're buying, I mean, between the rest of the.
Luton, Luton is the guy that's, that, uh, according to this, is, is the guy that represents the county, and he's chairman of the Johnson County School Board. And the secretary of that group is, is the superintendent.
The presentation I issued was the county, the city and county managers in Johnson were at a meeting with the school board, people. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the mayors were invited to a follow-up meeting on the mayor medal and participating in our behalf with the superintendent.
Yep.
But the questions on sheriff's offices and the Johnson County School Board is a duplicitous situation, so you would have to get confirmed answers from the Johnson County Public School System and Sheriff Bizzle. Would they place somebody at Benton Middle Elementary, that's a question I don't think any of us can answer. And so what we know before us today is, there's forty-eight thousand dollars available to us. It would offset sixty-six percent or so, roughly two-thirds of a police officer to get you. Another human being on this team that would be dedicated to SRO training, respond in Benton Middle Elementary, and then you'd have access to that person, him or her, in the summer season in August.
I brought up the things I brought up because the board here needed to know that. Because, uh, we've been on the discussion. Selma is going through exactly the same thing tonight.
But it seems to me, though, we could be, we could engage in this, bring in a new person that get, that would get forty-eight thousand dollars this year. It's not funded at any time, you know, after that, and suddenly it becomes our, you know, our concern. And then it becomes us, and, and that's a very lot, I mean, that gets, you, you, you know, it's, it's sort of dangling the kid around.
I agree with what, what Jim said. We, we're not gonna walk away from this tonight, but we gotta understand what's here, and that we can get out of it in sixty days by notification. But we oughta plan to have a resource officer there for the year. With the period of this contract, January first, and December thirty first, tonight, too.
And Mr. Johnson, I guess, to him, I am telling him actually to do a question about that, and, and, I always know you have to, you know, kind of, and, and you could, you could, so twenty-nine, maybe, or thirty-two, so, so, down, all the things that we have, and you come back, you tell them, recognition for, not in twenty, because, um, not twenty-nine, and I'm not voting, and, and, that's, that's, that's.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Maybe it's a point, um, sorry, I would go as far as to, to, Commissioner.
No, 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 Commissioner, yeah.
What'd you say?
That, I would say that this is something that's not gonna go away. So if the question on the floor is if we engage in this, are we gonna be holding to the responsibility of placing an SRO in that future, I will look at you as a town manager with the concerns of the chief of police and say, yes, sir, we believe that's gonna happen. Even if they don't fund it in year two or year three or year four, the odds are, you will have somebody, whether it's somebody in my chair or his chair, his post, asking you to maintain this. So I wanna be very open and transparent. I don't think you're gonna see this go away. And that, I think that's what you were asking, is there a probability? It's very high. I would say near a hundred percent that we are gonna wanna place an SRO in that future. Would you agree that?
Well, I, I just like this grossing up there on the municipality, so.
Yep.
They just happen to have schools in those, you know, and those city neighborhoods.
And I, what I'm saying is I agree with you, but I don't wanna do is leave you with any false impression that there would be a one-year situation allowed or a two-year situation allowed. Is that, is that what I'm, I'm saying with your thinking, is that more clear?
No, I think, uh, I, I disagree with you. This, this is a one-year situation that we're voting on. And whoever's sitting here at this board, a year from now, at the end of December, could be, uh, different people, and they might, uh, they might have a different opinion. So what we're voting on is what we're voting on right here.
That's right. But that board at the end of December, when they have to vote on whether or not to, to, to.
Yeah.
Somebody to do anyway, and trying to show you, you know, it's, it, whether, you know, tap into it or not.
Exactly right.
And that's what I was gonna do, Commissioner Johnson, and I want.
You've increased.
Yes, absolutely. And I want, I just wanted to be open because I, I think I can receive that through you, and I would, I'd say, as, as your legal counsel, the mayor's right that you have a legal right. But we're talking about a really, a non-legal question, but, you know, what we're expecting by, you know, you know.
When I, I, the station's part, you set the SRO's hours, and you, you set the hours, and, so you said we want you out there this time, this time, and we want you to do regular three feet, and this time, this time, and do that. This, this will work for the county, and, and what they need, but, but it'll be different, different time. I'm, I'm, I can, I can, I can, I can. Like, uh, Christmas holidays, would you work for a regular day? Um, it, 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 oh, it, but now, keep in mind, and I've heard this, the whole nine months, there's still activities at the schoolhouse, all of your rent, where you're talking, I mean, Paul, and we're back in that situation, maybe after a year, or, or, probably, that time, time, and I'm not kidding. There's still, I mean, I know that Jimmy was in nine months, and that also has a flexibility, that's still.
There is an exhibit aid, aid to this contract, and, and that talks about all the things that we're talking about, how many hours they have to work, what their job, what do they expect, and what's their role, uh, you know, their employment, and it says right in the contract that the chief of police, the town, that's gonna be, we've got personally forced to. So.
I just think.
Uh, we're, we're, we're into this for, for a year, and, you know, after that, it's coming.
But it's pretty tough to be, with, with, you got two schools, this and, 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 makes, and, the, this way, which is, makes, and, the, this way, and this way, and, and even this way, so it's, it's gotta be a place, and, and, but, we'll do it, and, 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 and.
Any other questions? Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no.
No.
By one. Tyler.
Are you presenting?
Yeah.
Oh, man.
All right, uh, we've got the, uh, facade improvement grants. Uh, we do this for new businesses and new buildings. In this case, it's a new building here, Alan Fairclough for, uh, Cornerstone, the new location there, it's, um, on the corner, uh, appropriately, one-on-one West Main. Um, he applied for a new, uh, wraparound awning and vinyl lettering on storefront windows, and it's already out there. It looks great. Um, you probably saw it during the Christmas on Main, uh, celebration of the fact. Um, the total cost of the project submitted was forty-four hundred, and that, uh, he meets all our requirements for the application, and the total reimbursement for that would be fifteen hundred.
Looks good.
Yeah. I thought they had his pictures out in the packet.
And they want hardly enough room in that place Friday night for all the people that want to be. So he must be pretty good. Any discussion on this? Stuff approved, then. He's already done the work. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, number two.
Same thing. Um, this was for, uh, one-oh-eight and one-ten East Main. It's a split building. It's, uh, same thing, uh, facade improvement grants for Mike's, uh, new location for the Four Oaks Benton News and Review. You can also see in the packet, uh, the majority of the work is for, uh, cleaning the masonry, uh, storefront, glazing on the windows, and repainting. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, back in the blue color, a period correct, uh, blue. And the total cost submitted for this was thirty-five hundred. Same deal, it, uh, meets all our requirements, and for the total reimbursement of fifteen hundred.
Any questions, uh, Tom? Entertaining motion to approve?
I don't think he's talking.
Just cause he listens. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Approve. Uh, a request from Alan Fairclough about changing the direction of Railroad Street, one-hundred block of southwest Railroad Street, from northbound to southbound.
Get the same.
Yeah.
In your packet is a letter of request, uh, very well written with the photographic evidence on page nine, six-year packet letter dated November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, uh, from Mr. Fairclough. Both he and his wife Donna are co-owners of the Cornerstone facility. Uh, their request is to change the direction which currently heads from Parish Drive to Main Street and empties on to Main. Their request is to reverse the pattern from Main Street to Parish Drive, uh, for safety purposes and ease of flow of traffic. Uh, for the record, that would, um, be more in line with our downtown traffic study that we did, our parking study, and we have communicated with Mr. Bruce Barefoot, who is the neighbor, uh, to Eddie Parish, Parish Fire, and then the new owners of the Fainting Goat Brewery at the end of the street. And none are in opposition to the realignment, resealing and, uh, re-striping of that roadway. So, uh, we believe that we, as a town, could take this, uh, consideration, move forward with your approval. Uh, weather permitting, public works would reseal that area and be able to re-stripe it internally. What I would advocate for, uh, tonight, just to be clear, is a potential reduction of one or two spots because the spots are so narrow. So when we go to realign them, the spots would actually be the proper width, uh, so that cars aren't hitting their doors, uh, on each other. So, uh, that's one thing we'll say in an open public meeting with Tim and their crew, is to make the spots wide enough that people can park them there. So, uh, we've yet to encounter any opposition to this change, and from a staff level would advocate that you would approve it, and if you do, again, when weather permits, uh, public work staff will go ahead and try to make that.
Do you think, then, on that, for the.
Uh, based on weather, I'm not sure when that would happen. Then would you want to speculate based on your meteorological skills?
Well, let me rephrase the question. Can you have it ready by, by Valentine? That's when the brewery's gonna open. Any other questions?
Personally, I, I come out of that area, you know, you know, I come out there and buddy, look, seven things, exactly what I say, just, two things.
It's not called.
You won't believe my second thing, I know, I'm trying to find the focus. (laughing). I don't like to go with that.
You're right, I know. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye, thank you. Matt, uh, in focus.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I wanna point out, there's a typographical error on the agenda, one hundred percent my fault. Under item I, numero one, where it says twelve hours per week, it should read through June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, not twenty eighteen. Uh, so that is, that's just a note for you. Attached to your packet, page ninety-seven, is a potential extension to an agreement with the company End Focus, which is, uh, the planning public administration, American Design Firm, that has placed Andy Thomas, uh, within our confines as an interim planning director during, uh, the maternal leave for Aaron Joseph. Aaron's now back, and as of November, has been promoted to the position of acting planning director with the intent of grooming Aaron between today and June thirtieth, is what her acting letter indicated. So what we had thought was beneficial to the town was maintaining Andy Thomas on a lower level, eight to twelve hour per week agreement, uh, to, to serve and to guide our planning team as they transition, uh, between today and the end of the fiscal year. So the request before you, uh, is to engage or continue to engage or re-engage End Focus on a contractual period, uh, through June thirtieth up to, June thirtieth, approximately twelve hours per week, uh, at a cost of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, uh, if he worked all twelve hours each and every week. And that's the request that staff has made, and that comes from working with both Aaron Joseph and Jacob Brantley on the needs and demands of the department, provide technical support.
Does Aaron feel that these people, she's what, what they are, is, uh, he's gonna be able to, uh, help her get up and sleep?
She does, and what she has indicated is for, uh, potential assistance on Tuesdays and Fridays. The Reed and Tuesday is the technical expert who's gonna be able to participate in planning meetings and attend board meetings if needed when an action item comes, uh, forward. And then we're looking at a Friday, eight-hour term. Our inspection team during the warm weather month works four, ten-hour days, so that gives us an additional human in the front office. So if Jacob is doing primary inspections Monday through Thursday on the fourth end, that gives us both Aaron and potentially Andy and Mr. Reed in the planning office on Friday as well. So yes, sir, to answer your question, uh, per Aaron's, he would appreciate having expertise. This is almost identical to the process we did when we promoted him to picket. Uh, Tim went from utility building to acting or in finance, and then became finance director.
Does anybody have any comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
James, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Tim?
We'll come talk about the resolution for Royal Shorty's response plan. Couple of reasons, uh, I brought to you a, uh, were, why, uh, required resolution. I apologize, I did not realize that we also have to, we're also required to get revolution for our emergency water shortage response plan. By the state, they sent me one month, and then did that business as we're supposed to, and then a month or so later, they sent me, they came over, they were all five in the cycle, and the lives of these kind of things happened within five years. I brought to you, and I didn't know, just waiting on the, on the, on the, on the, so nonetheless, uh, this is a similar request, I had a couple of, to, 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 that, that we, we do have these things, even. It's part of our overall water distribution plan, and emergency plan, and associated, uh, and this is one of the things within the five years, to stay, to, to, to see that you guys understand that we've got, you know, us, you know, the resolution to, yes, we've got these things, we've got, so. So, the emergency water shortage response plan is basically that we have a mechanism in place to, uh, to handle, to be employed in, to, to, but we've got it in place to, um, restrict irrigation and things like that, and, and, but, but we're all in a, a, a situation, so.
Does anybody have any questions, uh, Tim? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Aye, thank you. Thanks. Uh, consider approval of Lee Street complex bid. Fifty of them, Smith.
Now, as all of y'all are aware, um, during Hurricane Florence, the roof of our gym, it had been peeled back, and water got into the gym. Um, the, the historic floor started to swell, so we had to cut a, a hole in the middle of it to keep from, from foundation. So what we've done is we, we actually went out for bid on the roof and on the flooring. The roof, we did not get enough people to respond, so we had to go back out for rebid. You'll see that come up in the January meeting. So for this one, this is for the floor. We gave the bidders three options. Um, option one was they could remove the existing floor and replace it. Option two was just replace the floor and we would find a way to get everything removed. And then option three was we would remove it and we would find somebody to replace it. Um, we went out the first time, we had one response of bidder, so we rebid. Um, the second time, we got two bidders. And we had one of the bidders, Royal Wood Associates, chose to bid all three options. Um, their option number one, which is the option that staff is gonna bring forward to replace, to remove and replace the floor, came in at eighty-six thousand, eight ninety-seven. Um, we did receive insurance funding for this, so the money is already there, we have the money to cover it, and so we are asking for the board to approve Royal Wood Associates Incorporated, um, to do the work. And they are, they actually do the work for the school system, so this is, is what they did. Yeah.
Any questions, uh, Tim?
Uh, the only question I got is, uh, roof's gonna be big for the local, you know, that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So we'll come to you in January, we'll hopefully have, we'll, if we have our, our response of bidder, um, it's a rebid, so we just need, you know, one person. Um, we'll bring that to you in January. Hopefully, they'll be able to, to get that done very quickly, and then we'll do the floor right after.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Aye, thank you. Uh, consider approval of the October twenty eighteen financials.
Um, so I bring forward to you the October twenty eighteen financials. For the month of October, we stood at forty-six point forty-two percent in revenue and thirty-nine percent, um, in expenditures. I was talking with the mayor yesterday, and he thought it'd be a good idea if I just updated the board because the, the taxes are in three different funds. So, so far, um, as of today, we have collected seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars in tax money.
Does that not work?
Well, a majority of it is gonna come in this month and next month, so that's a good amount, I mean.
Not to take down, even if, we, this is our intention, um, and I'd let Matt, it's pretty great, but our intention would be to repair the lighting inside the gymnasium, going to LED, and, 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 and. The second, that, that level of the windows. He said he wants to know if you agree. I said, you are, and you agree. But then, we were talking about, um, air conditioning the windows inside the gymnasium. It's our intention, if there's, if there's, uh, those funds will be reinvested in the gymnasium. That's part of the, the process that we'd like to bring forward, the updating board.
We, we'll dance on Main Street when we get out.
Well, you could dance inside the gym, because it's the air conditioning.
(laughing).
But right now, we're looking at a, the maintenance of, of the existing structures, and Commissioner Neighbors brings up a great point. If any funds available, we should look at, uh, the mediation, some of those, and, and, and.
I got a question about a building, because, uh, I was there. We don't have break-ins again, I, I say where you can go in.
Well, we, we have. Any other questions about the financials? I'll entertain a motion to approve it, it's pretty. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Glenn gonna present?
No, sir, he, he left. No, sir, he, he left, so he. We, you, we can co-share, but normally this is, these are purchase orders from my department. Uh, but, as Glenn indicated, there is a request from the electric department, uh, to spend less than thirty thousand dollars on an F-150 crew cab four-wheel drive truck. Uh, I would like to publicly thank the electric department. We received insurance funds to do major repairs inside and renovate the structure, and due to the fact that their team did it internally without having to go outside, allowed us to save that money and reinvest it in a permanent piece of equipment. So, uh, the need being brought before you tonight is a request for an F-150 on state bid, which would fall in a twenty nineteen model, and it'd be twenty-nine thousand five eighty-one. And Glenn can speak to it at greater length if he wants, but ask him any of this.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
And I make the most of it here, too.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Aye, sir.
The second item comes from the wastewater treatment plant. If I'm not mistaken, uh, we have an opportunity to utilize the USDA loan for funding a purchase of pump. This is a bypass pump that would be, if you wanna call it trailer driven, it'll be axle mounted, and this would help us substantially in our, uh, maintenance of our wastewater treatment plant and our steam flow system. So, uh, the request coming from Public Works to add wastewater is to spend up to forty-five thousand dollars to secure that pump. It was one of the items identified, uh, post Hurricane Matthew that was needed.
Do you, do you have, where did you?
We have USDA funding for this, for this project.
So, it's not gonna come out from the bottom?
No, sir.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve it. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you. Uh, the two thousand and eighteen postponed yield date, uh, courtesy of thirteen Florence Report, uh, should be included in the package, and want to speak to you about it. If you have any questions with the dollar amount, uh, we took the revenues and the total amount of costs, which estimated amount of revenues is roughly thirty-four thousand, and the total cost was just north of fifty-six thousand for a deficit this year of just under twenty-three thousand dollars to help to do from year two thousand and eighteen. It's broken down by department, we can see that our golf cart sales were down dramatically. Normally, we're eighteen to twenty thousand, we're only thirteen thousand. You can see that some of our, uh, numbers were down to cleanup, and, uh, we, we didn't, it wasn't as large in New Lake, so we didn't spend as much manpower and cleanup supplies, but ultimately, our revenues were down to, the general difference was about the same, and we fluttered between eighteen thousand and roughly thirty-four, thirty-five thousand annually over the last five or six years of each year.
Any questions? Entertain a motion. To, to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, no.
Uh, upcoming on events, we've obviously been extremely busy, and there's a lot happening. First and foremost, for all the staff, the community members, business owners, and all the people that came to participate, Christmas on Main, in my estimation, uh, was a record-setting Christmas on Main. So, looking back on the recent great job, uh, Christmas on Main is very well done. Thank you to the chamber, thank you to everyone that helped you. Uh, in regards to upcoming for us, we have our town Christmas party slated for Thursday night. We'd like to thank Benson Baptist Church for having us back. Uh, again, all the commissioners are invited at six P.M., Board's loco. The meal is slated to begin at six thirty. The meal this year is being catered by Redneck Barbecue, and we're looking forward to having a, a very nice celebration, and thanking our staff for all they've done in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, December twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, all non-emergency facilities, town hall, library, museum, and park will be closed for an observation of Christmas. And then, we'd be closed again on January first. Since New Year's Eve is a Monday, uh, we're gonna have a very limited amount of staff on, we can only assume. Many people are taking vacations, CPO that day, so, uh, we don't expect a mad rush on town hall and New Year's Eve to pay a utility bill, but we will be here open, ready to serve. Uh, I fully intend to be here, and we're gonna allow a majority of our staff to be off if they have CPOs or anything. Uh, your next regular scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting is the second Tuesday, which will make it the eighth of January, seven P.M. And then, we'd also be closed on January twenty-first, uh, in observation of Martin Luther Jr.'s, uh, National Holiday. In addition to that, I do want to address that we have a lot of conversation happening, a lot of department transportation conversations happening. And so, uh, we do appreciate everyone that participated in tonight. What, where they've shift, shifted our terminology from comprehensive to the word community transportation plan. So, you'll hear those two terms, whether it be comprehensive or community interchangeable. But, we do thank the board for making the investments, the plans for Benson Transportation Futures, and thank you for coming to the I ninety-five meeting, the, uh, three oh one meeting, and now our comprehensive community transportation planning meeting. The other item that I'd like to report on tonight is the success so far of our line worker development program. Uh, we have three of our staff, three of our ten Saturdays completed, and we had the last, uh, third one this past weekend. We have over fourteen young men lined up to participate in the Johnson County Public Works Line Work Development Program. And we wanna thank Glenn and his team, who are really carrying a lot of the responsibility here. Like, the class is held at our facilities. Uh, they helped build some rigging and pulling, some workers on weekends. Our equipment's being accessed to train and teach, and our line people are coming in. So, Garrett worked, and the second one was passed Saturday, Ron Seeger's work. And so, it's just nice to see our team taking a committed interest in the future of that line work development program. Along those same lines, I had the privilege to speak at the NC Works program, and the weekend Thursday, Tyler and I went, and we were one of seven speakers, and I think that our program, what we presented on, was quite possibly the highlight of the day at the NC Works, uh, facility, for two reasons. One is the Benson is proactive in hiring and trying to train police officers by sending them to base bunches and training. And then, the second is the creativity and success of this line work program. So, it's kinda hard to do an add-a-boy for our own self, but I think the entire board and our team is really doing some excellent work, and people are talking about it in a very positive manner. And the electricity meeting in August, last week at NC, NC Works's, uh, annual board's, quarterly board meeting, to see where we're headed in the month of January and February. Because of all these great things that we're doing, we've been invited to participate on January twenty-second at the Internet of Things Congress, where I will be a panelist speaking on behalf of Benson. And then, I'm also fortunate enough through my role at Electric City, to serve as the chairperson at the Connection Summit, which is the statewide regional, um, technology training, uh, symposium. It's gonna be the first time that anything of high-tech or smart cities was held by, in Raleigh in the state of North Carolina by electricity. So, we're chairing that, and we're participating in it. And then, I'll allow the mayor to speak for the smart city contact that we've received, uh, from Charter. So, there's a lot of great things happening in Benson, so, as we get into twenty eighteen, close to twenty eighteen on Thursday night, I firmly believe we have a lot to be thankful for. And as we look forward to nineteen, um, we made a joke today, I think it was Tim and I were giving around, uh, keep your hands and feet inside the ride at all times, and enjoy your tour of the town of Benson for nineteen, because it's speeding right along, uh, and if there's anything that my office, our team, I could be doing different and better for you as far as keeping it in the form, uh, the communication of it, please tell us how to do that, and we appreciate your support, uh, both the time and energy that we're putting in, and the financial support from equipment to where we are today. Uh, thanks for the electric department I know, and for the public work, keeping those lines clear, that's keeping the power on, and keeping us out of trouble. Uh, so, we, I think, as a team, are doing really great things. And so, uh, as we close out eighteen, I want to personally thank the board, the mayor for what he's done. And again, if there's something we can do different, better, faster, stronger, uh, more or less in twenty nineteen, we've got a knowledge, we've got, uh.
Just, just as a matter of point, uh, from the first three sessions you've had, have you lost anybody out there?
We, we have, we have some gentlemen that haven't been able to navigate their way back with GPS, so we've had, uh, we've lost a few, uh, and we did make the joke on Saturday, due to the weather, if they weren't able to navigate in that little bit of snow, they probably need to find a different career path. That'd be the first ones here, so, uh, we did hold classes, flights, throughout the weather, but we started out with around seventeen, eighteen, and right now, you got about fourteen coming open.
Well, I think that's good, though. I thought it was late to start.
We're doing well, thank you.
Aye. Appreciate all the work you did on that, that's all. Any commissioners?
I don't know, but I, to be honest, the last young man that you hired, he is a go-getter. He is indeed a go-getter. I, in fact, I saw him last week, he was about running, and I saw it, it turned snowed down, and he got to running. But, he is on top of things, I just wanted to tell you that. Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? We're the dogs. Over, over two, no. I, I wanna ju- just bring up a couple of things, and, uh, I've already mentioned this one time, but, uh, the board retreat is really important for us to, to check the direction we're gonna go. Uh, he's already told, he can't go, but if anybody else is not gonna be able to go, let me know, so we can start, start making some plans. Uh, one of the things that, uh, I think a lot about, and I did this when I was in the office club, is that we always start the meeting with a prayer. And I wanna give any of the commissioners that, uh, would like to, to have the prayer for, uh, for our start of our meeting, to let me know, because Jim always does a good job, and he did a good job tonight. And, uh, so, if, if you wanna do it sometime, just say, hey, let me, uh, let me do it tonight. Uh, the railroad, there's been so much discussion about the railroad, it's unbelievable, railway track on, uh, on Church Street. Uh, I think we finally got, uh, somebody that, I got an answer for. Uh, we went to the guy that was, uh, he is lobbyist for the railroad, he's located in Columbia, South Carolina. And, uh, he, he was called by one of the DOT people that were responsible for railroad issues. And I talked to him on the phone last Friday for a good long while, and, uh, he said that, well, he talked to the people in Selma, and then he called me back and said, uh, they're working that way, they're in Elm City now, and that they're gonna completely rework both of those, uh, they've parish five and Church Street. And he was guessing that it's gonna be probably the first of February. And when he told me that, I said, I told him that I'd be in jail if it is, that he needed to try to get the schedule pulled up. And if you've been out and looked down at the railroad track, you see railroad ties piled up all the way down. So, they're gonna replace all the tracks and all the railroad, uh, like I said, starting in Elm City, so, uh, I'm gonna, I, I told him I would call him every Friday to, to get an update on, uh, what's going on. And we really need to have that fit, because people call me all the time. They started calling me, uh, no railroad man, a lot of like that. Call you maybe their name, and you get some stuff done. We don't like to talk ugly on the phone. Uh, the other thing is, uh, is Charter, and, uh, uh, I, I have got a, a, uh, presentation from them that, uh, they wanna come and, and talk about what Spectrum is gonna do in the future. And I'm telling you, we are really interested in what they're gonna do in the future. And so, we've made contact with, uh, with the lobbyists to let us know when we could, we could have a presentation from them in the future for their work. I just know they raise their rates, uh, four point three percent, and, uh, I told them I was taking mine out, so, we probably will get a meeting pretty quick, probably quick. Is anything else anybody wants to bring up? I appreciate, uh, all the work that we've done today for the, for the meeting, before our meeting. I appreciate, uh, everybody's job giving me. And I guess, uh, as I told you the first time we were together, one of the most important things we do in our job is to get prepared for these meetings. It's not an easy task, and Matt knows that I like to get my packet on Friday, because if I'm not working out in the garden or somewhere, I'm, I start working on this, and I walk out on Sunday, and then I review it on Monday. And, uh, what's in this packet is really important, that we know what, uh, what the, uh, the staff has presented us, and they always give us the details, so, I encourage you to, to continue doing the kind of job you're doing, reading the packet, and knowing what's up. Anything else you need to bring up? Anything for the good, call. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
And I make a motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you.